Good evening. It is April 3rd and we will reconvene the Town Council Special Meeting, the Budget Meeting. All councilors are present with the exception of Counselor Baumgartner, who notified that he is on his way. And we have several town accounts along with one subdivision account this evening. We'll be beginning with account number 1024, which is Public Safety. And I believe we have staff there. Counselor Parker, would you like to move a number, please?
Eight million five hundred sixty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. I saw moved by.
Second. Moved by Parker and seconded by Franco. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening.
Gentlemen, if you just would introduce yourselves for the public, please, and then you can present whatever you would like about your budget.
I'm Chief LJ Fizaro. With me today is Deputy Chief Paul Gately and Captain Steve Sinovra. My first concern was who was going to sit where because they were trying to fight over sitting near the cookies, so I'm glad we settled that dispute. But in all seriousness, good evening. Now, the budget we've presented to you tonight and that we've gone through with the Town Manager, I believe satisfies the requirements we have as an agency to perform our duties. The most notable impact is the fact that in this budget, we've asked to have a supervisory position restored. One of the concerns I know that council members have had, certainly we have, is, you know, controlling overtime expenditures. I've said it in this forum before, public safety is a 24/7 operation. We do have requirements to staff positions. From time to time, our officers are injured in line of duty, suffer illnesses, or use their required, or use their accrued leave time for vacations and for other events. So filling those positions is critically important. And in the past two years, we've had some shortages at the supervisory ranks, which really has impacted that. And I'll give you some examples. Last year, we had a supervisor that was deployed with the United States Army for a year. So that impacted our supervisory staffing. Meanwhile, in the last budget season, we absorbed some tasks and duties that were in another function of town government. I think it's worked well. I think it's been a good and seamless integration of both dispatch and emergency management into our operation. But at the same time, while we assumed those duties, we lost a civilian staff member, we also lost a lieutenant. And those duties had to be shared and continue to be shared, among others. Where we really have had some deficiencies is in the supervisory ranks. Also impacting that is we have had a supervisor that was out on a long-term disability associated with an on-the-job injury. That is a fact of the environment we operate in. Police officers do occasionally get hurt when they're conducting their duties, and that was the unfortunate situation that presented us with last year, is a key member of our team that was, that was out for the better part of a year as well. So we did have overtime expenditures that impacted that. That does trickle down to the patrol ranks. We staff patrols 24/7. We need to make sure we have a satisfactory number of officers that are able to perform their duties. So the bulk of what we've got here is really the personal services account. To offset some of the costs associated with reinstating a lieutenant position, we did work with the Town Manager in reducing overtime expenditures. Those were reduced by $94,000. So the give and take was to try and get that position back, but also offset the amount of that position with overtime. In the meantime, during the course of this year, we have filled some positions, particularly in the dispatch center, where we're getting up to what our authorized staffing is and what we're funded at. But it does take time, particularly with dispatchers, because we have a limited number of trainers, we have a limited ability to train people at any given time, so we have to do it one at a time. But we're, we're in a much better position with our dispatch center now, I think, with 12 dispatchers, the 12th having come onboard the first of this month. So. Also, I'd point to you, in addition to the $94,000, one of the, one of the items that's been in our budget for several years is a cost, sorry, salary adjustment. That's also reflected in this. And there has been some reductions in our operating costs. So generally speaking, it's about $190,000 less than what we had originally requested. But we've, we've implemented some measures that I think will help impact not just the delivery of services, but the efficiency of the delivery of those services. So having said that, that's, that's the major point of our budget. And the other part I would indicate is, I want to say thanks to the council for the support of some projects that we've done in the last couple of years, most notably our radio system. I have been updating the Town Manager pretty regularly. Last year, or yesterday, was a true test of our new radio system. We have fielded it. All our officers have portable radios that are on the new system. We've got most of our mobile radios installed. We're waiting on a couple more to be delivered. I can tell you that the functionality, the coverage, and, and the overall satisfaction our officers have seen with this radio system is outstanding. We've, we've really moved forward with this project, and I think it's presented our department with, with an ability to provide officer communications and officer safety and public safety to our citizens in a better way. Yesterday, we also provided assistance to Groton Long Point by helping with the installation of their radios and giving them some, some tutorials on how to use them. So I can tell you that both agencies right now, and I'm not speaking for Groton Long Point, but certainly want to point out that they're on it, and so far, the officers that I've talked to are pretty happy with it. And I really want to thank the council and the RTM for supporting that project that was needed, and it was, I think, done in a very efficient way. So with that, I'll certainly open to questions.
Thank you. Counselor Parker?
Just two questions. I'm looking at, on page 111, Cost Center 2 for the Special Service Bureau, and also the Community Oriented Policing, which is Cost Center Number 7. Can you explain the increases on those?
Community Orient, it's for a dedicated police officer. We went over that last year, and I think the discussions that we had with the Town Manager is to not just offset it with overtime, which is what we did last year, is actually fund that position.
Is that, is that an officer?
It is an officer. It's not an additional officer, though. It's putting that funding in that position.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, your other was?
The Special Service Bureau.
Um, that takes into account not just our assigned investigators, but also the school resource officer. So those are the positions associated with that.
And the school resource officer is split with the Board of Ad, correct?
10 months of the year, we, we've done a calculation that goes through finance. They send a bill, comes out of our account, but it gets, it then gets replaced. And I defer to Cindy Landry to make sure that my explanation of that is accurate.
We actually, the Board of Ad pays us for a portion of his salary, and we actually put that into another account, and we charge off the officer there until such time as those funds are depleted, then it's returned back to the police department.
So, I'm sorry, one more question. So wasn't he there in that Special Service Bureau last year?
We've traditionally, one thing we're trying to do is put people where they actually work. That officer is technically a patrol officer, so where it shows up has been in the patrol staffing. So we've tried to align the department in a way that reflects where people are actually at, and where the council get paid out of.
Counselor Atwater, and then Counselor Franco and Obray.
I have a few curiosity questions, I guess. Last year, we changed the ordinance on parking, the amount for parking tickets and so forth. Has that had any impact, one way or the other, more revenue, more delinquents, more anything?
Not dramatically. We're still, quite frankly, awaiting the arrival of the ticket books that we ordered some time ago that reflect the change.
Oh, okay.
But parking tickets is not a remarkable amount of income for us.
No, but I just wondered really how the program was.
A little bit, it's more prevent, obviously, it's more preventative. I mean, people know that there's more of a fine attached to it. We have had individuals, there is a mechanism within town that if an individual gets a parking ticket, they can ask for a hearing, and we've, we've got a couple of those that have been waiting.
I noticed the, the police canine account went up by almost, well, $9,000.
We, we fielded three canines for the first time in a few years, so, you know, that's, that reflects that. So we've got a third canine that came onboard, as you remember, back in the summer, end of the summer. So we have three full canine teams that are fielded right now.
Okay, and in 2018, the, where is it, the criminal investigation account was about 400,000, and now it's up to 580,000. Is there a lot more crime? Is there a lot more?
No, those are for salaries. We've, we were short. That's just our estimate, you know, based on the staffing that we've got, any of the persons in there.
Okay. And then, another curiosity question. Last year, there was a CIP, I believe, for $50,000 to take down a wall. Could we have an update on where or what is?
I know that nothing has, it hasn't been removed yet. It has been, we've had individuals from Public Works over. They brought some contractors in to look at it, to get some pricing, to get that initiated. That was as of a couple of weeks ago, the last time they came over to look at it. You were, the captain, I think, was there. Did you have anything to comment on that?
No, they're still working on the engineering to remove that wall, the electric that's in it, and coming up with a plan to do that.
Okay. And then, my last question, and this is really a personal curiosity question. When you're traveling around, and not just in Groton, but at places, police leave their cars running a lot of the time. And I'm assuming, I've been told, that it's so that it will start up, that you won't have that problem?
That's kind of a, quite frankly, that's kind of a pet peeve of mine, and I think these guys will attest to it. There are times we have to leave a car running. For instance, if there's a canine in it, officers will leave it running because of the air conditioning, the heating, that sort of stuff. If they are, sometimes at our facility, they have to leave it running for a couple of minutes for data to upload to and from the cars, but generally sitting around, unless you're at a scene and you need to keep the battery running or keeping the car running.
Because my, my thinking was, if you take all the vehicles in the United States, they're all idling away. Not only are you using a tremendous amount of gasoline, but you're also putting a lot of pollutants in the air.
Sure.
And I got thinking, I've been driving for 60-odd years, I guess, and I can count on less than one hand the number of times my car wouldn't start because of the battery failure or something. And it just seemed to me like, again, I know it's not going to change, I just, this.
Well, one, one point just to remember, in our police vehicles, there's a lot of electronics, there's a lot of draw from light bars, radios, other types of equipment that are in it. So it's not uncommon, there is some validity to that, where a cruiser, particularly in the cold months, will have folks from the town garage come up and assist to starting cars because the batteries die quickly overnight, particularly in cold weather. So there's some merit to that, particularly if a car is at a scene, you know, will remain idling because you can't run those lights, you can't run the communications equipment if, if the car dies. And there is a big.
Thank you, Chief. You've answered a long puzzling problem of mine, so, thank you.
Counselor Franco, and then Counselor Obray.
Hello. Hi. So I had a chance at the St. Patrick's Day Parade to speak to one of your officers, and they were very happy with the new radios. I was glad to hear that. They said they were much clearer than the old ones, and I think that was the day you had a kickoff when you were using them for the first time.
That was the first day we actually used them, yes.
Yeah, so they seemed very pleased. I also want to give kudos, because I was very impressed with the town animal control and some other officers, when a pet goes missing, and how much they're willing to help, and how much they do help. Because, I mean, people are very frantic when their pet is missing, and how much they call on animal control. So could you please explain to me on page 112, the difference between item number 5104 and 5107? Because they are both overtime?
Mm-hmm. Shift replacement is just that. We're replacing someone on a particular shift. For instance, we have X amount of officers that are working midnight shift tonight. Someone goes out because they're ill, or because we need to send them to training, we need to replace that particular shift. Other overtime is all the other stuff that is done. For instance, if we need to put people out on a special assignment for some reason, we're doing, yesterday, we had a bunch of people we brought in on overtime for traffic control throughout town, following up on investigations, if they make an arrest at the end of their shift. All those other things that, that we do in our operation. And also is replacement of dispatch staff as well. So it's, it's the strict replacement of personnel on a shift versus, you know, if I call somebody in on the weekend for a serious crime, and we have the detective unit out, they get paid out of that account.
All right, I see. Just because when you combine the two, it's like a little over a million dollars. And as we discussed last year, I was wondering, has a cost analysis been done regarding putting more officers on as, on shifts, and maybe hiring if need be, versus overtime?
Yeah, I have, I have given a draft proposal. I have not had the opportunity with budget stuff to review that with the Town Manager. I have given it to him, and we've, we've had some discussions on it. So there's, there are some strategies that we're looking at to impact that.
Okay, thanks. And could you tell me, I under, we have a hiring freeze, and it's not quite a hiring freeze where nobody's allowed to be hired, but it's more or less, you have to come, explain the reasons why a replacement or another person. And so my question is, how does that affect your department, especially when you have to hire people in the process to get to the actual hiring, and then training them before they can actually start?
Sure. It, it does make it a bit of a challenge for us, for two reasons. Because we offer, we operate off of two hiring lists, and if you go onto policeapp.com, you'll be able to see it. One is for new hires, meaning individuals that have never been police officers before, that are not trained, haven't gone anywhere before, the people off the street. Maybe they just got out of college, or got out of the military, or are just looking for a career change. We hire them, it takes money months to get them in the pipeline. We have to do the solicitation, we do the written exam, oral exam, then we bring them in for interviews, polygraph, psychological background. There's, it's a long process. And for those individuals, the challenge for us is, we only get X amount of slots in a police academy class. For instance, we can request two slots for the July class. We wait until we find out from post, which is the Police Officer Standards and Training Council Academy, to say, hey, you've got a seat in the academy, you've got two seats in the academy. So if we were to miss that window, we would forfeit those seats, and we'd have to wait for the next academy class. There's only four per year, so we're competing with those academy seats with every other department in the state. So that does create a bit of a challenge to making sure we, we get to that point where if we have, if we have a certified list, and we're able to hire, to either do that in advance, or come to the council and say, hey, we've got to, like, for instance, we have an academy class that started this week. We were unable to get things done, to move people forward into that process. The other side is an example that I can give you, that just as today, we received applications from two individuals that are certified officers, meaning they've been trained in the academy, they've worked at other police departments, that want to come to our department. If I had the vacancy in the past, what I could ordinarily do is just go through the process of interviewing them, send the request through Human Resources to the Town Manager for approval of a hire. In my mind, we come before the council at the beginning of the year to give you the budget, say, these are the authorized positions, or these are the positions we're looking to have staffed. Doing it again kind of creates the second, the second time we have to do that. So it, for us, it does create a little bit of a challenge to get the people, recruit them, get them through the process, and then get them into the academy, or hire them off the street. And the other part of that, the reason why timing is critical, hiring in law enforcement right now is a, is a challenge for every department, not just us, nationally, you know, society, it's a, you know, there's, there's a lot of reasons that impact it. I've, I've sent some things, I don't know if they've, they've made it to you, but I've certainly sent things indicating that we're having the same challenges that our, all our peers are. So we're competing with the same pool of applicants that every other department is competing with. So obviously, we want the best. So does everybody else, in making sure that we can attract them and hire them, I hate to say before, our competition, that, that is, that is a reality. To get people that are able to pass a polygraph is a huge challenge, to have people that have a clean background, and to meet the standards that we're willing to hire them at, you know, all plays a part in it. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does, thank you. And I have one more. So I wanted to know how much an event similar to the one that you had at Belfer Beatty, that was a very long situation going on there. And I know the state was called in, and it was, it seemed to me like all hands would be on deck for that situation, and it lasted quite a long time. And I was wondering how that impacts your budget, and also, do you have to reimburse the state for anything that they?
No, not for that. It happens that myself and the deputy chief used to be in that role, those, I was the commander, he was the executive officer of that very unit that we called out. We don't have to reimburse them, that's a, that's a, that's a service that the state provides, that the state police will come out for specialty services like that. We do not have a SWAT team, but the state does, so when we need that resource, we contact them. Yeah, it does, it does impact our budget, because we've had, we had detectives, investigators out there for numerous hours, we had, we're obligated to, we provide the outer and inner perimeters to allow them to do their tactical operations. It is, you know, it's an expensive endeavor. You know, fortunately, those don't happen every day, but it's no different than any other critical event. You know, yesterday cost us a lot of money because of a traffic issue. If, you know, we have a serious crime or homicide, that costs a lot of money. Those are unplanned events that it's hard for us to put a number with and say, this is what's going to cost us at the end of the year, we just don't know. We could go, we could go out without an incident like that for a few years, or we could have back-to-back weeks with that type of incident, and it's, there's no rhyme or reason to it. But it does cost us some money. But to answer your question, there is no reimbursement that goes to the state.
All right.
Your, our taxes all pay for that as well. So, you know, when I was SWAT team commander, that was the sales pitch I would give, you're already paying for the service, you don't need to pay for it twice.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Obray, and then Zepari.
Some of my questions were answered, but I have a couple for you. On the parking tickets, did we ever decide what style we were going to work with? Remember, we talked about an envelope type, so that they could just mail the money back, since most of the people were from out of town?
Well, I know that there was, well, it wasn't really the style of the ticket itself, it was, as I recall, it was being able to send them in.
Right.
There was some provisions, we, we did incorporate the suggestions of the council into that.
Once I get, usually you're in an envelope, you put the money in, you send it back.
Where did you park this evening? We'll, we'll maybe take.
Can't miss Mike out.
Okay.
Okay, the other thing, I believe we brought somebody else on at the animal?
We did. Carrie Jackeir, she started last month. She happened to have worked here before as a part-time animal control officer.
Okay. And, and do the, do the officers sometimes help if they're in a?
If need be, yes, yes.
That's great.
In fact, when we had the shortage there, that, when there was a lapse in time before we had the assistant animal control officer, we have a few officers that are trained to, you know, feed the animals down there, clean up, assist as needed.
I want to go for the training for the cleanup. The other question I had was item 2, 5290, Professional Technical Services, I believe that's what it stands for. Could you just explain that a little bit to me, because that seems to be a rising number?
Oh, yeah, that, those are all the, the agreements that we have, that, I, I think I've said this when we were going through the radio process, we need to maintain the equipment we have, we need to maintain this stuff and the, and the network that we're on. That did go up, and that was part of the proposal with the radio system. There is maintenance fees that we have to pay annually, that is incorporated into that. There's other things that we utilize that we need to pay maintenance services for, service contracts. Unfortunately, they seem to all be going up, not just for us, but I think for everybody that has a service contract that's going to be sitting in this seat can tell you the same thing, all those, those do. The, the big difference was, this costs us about $28,000 a year for the maintenance contract with it. And honestly, it's, it's an insurance policy in many ways, but this is, this is a computer system. Don't make no mistakes about it. This is not the old type of radios where it was just shortwave FM communications. This is a computer. Inside of this, we have to, we have to do frequent updates annually. In order to be on the state system, we had to agree to that, because, you know, it, it doesn't do us any good to not update this, and we won't be able to use that system, it won't be compatible with it. So it is good from a maintenance standpoint, but it's, it's, again, it's just like the software updates, we have to do it computers, and all the other, you know, highly technical pieces of equipment. So that, the, the numbers you're talking about did go up, and this is part of it.
Okay. And do you have your own IT people, or do you work with the IT department that we have?
The, it's the town IT department. We do have an individual, Lou Kukin, is part of our, we look at him part of our team, but really, he's, he's employed by a human, I mean, IT, he's, he's quite frequently in our building, though.
Okay, everybody got everything else I was going to ask?
Counselors Zepari, and then Counselor Schmidt.
I, I noticed that on page 113, in 2018, between 2018 and 2019, the number of patrol officers rose by one, from 41 to 42. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then it's remained constant since then?
It wasn't an increase in staff. If you look, you'll also see a corresponding reduction. One of our officers has been filling the role of the evidence officer, which had formerly been a detective, is that what you're referring to?
I'm just looking at that line, on the cost for the patrol officers. Now, an increase of patrol officers from 41 to 42 would involve about a 2.5% increase in cost. Am I correct? 41 into 100 goes 2.5.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that you understand what's, what this reflects. It also reflects a reduction in another line.
No, no, I'm just looking at the one line, just at the cost of patrol officers. And so what I, the way I looked at it, and I saw that year, the cost of wages for patrol officers went up by 4.2%. Now, if we take away the 2.5% for the increase in number by one, that leaves us with about a 1.7% increase in wages. Is that correct? Am I figuring that right?
I, I don't have a calculator here, I'm not good with public math, I'm just going to preface it with that.
Okay, I, I did the math.
I'm going to take your, I'm going to take your word for it.
Okay. But this year, the, the cost for 42 officers has gone from $2,904,001 to $3,66,875. That's an increase of 162,844, or 5.6%. Has the average wage of the police officer gone up by 5.6% this year?
No, it hasn't. But there are step raises too, as well, in addition to the, so an officer gets, you can't look at it as just you get a 2% raise, it depends on if they advance a step. So there could be an increase more than 2%, if they hit a.
So that you, you had programmed in a 2% raise, but the overall cost rose by 5.6%?
There are step raises for the first six years of an officer's career, in addition to the, the annual cost of living increase. The step raises are 4% between each step in the pay scale. So we have a very young department, we have a number, the majority of the department is getting that step raise every year, so it's increasing besides.
So next year, we should expect a rise of more than 5.6% for paying for patrol officers?
No, at some point, they hit the top step, and they don't get that raise anymore. But right now, we have a lot of young officers who are getting that step raise.
So how long will we anticipate an increase of 5.6% per year?
It's all based on turnover and how often we have to hire.
So you don't know?
No.
I'm just concerned that I, you know, I think the, the state got into great difficulty because they negotiated a contract with, with state employees that they all got 5% raise every year, and.
I don't, I don't recall that ever happening.
That's not true.
Well, that was, that was in my younger days, and you may not be old enough for it, but I do remember that.
Times must have been a lot better then, because in my 22 years working for the state, I never saw that.
Times are pretty poor now from some of the mismanagement they've done up there. And I just would like to be sure that we're not going to be falling into the same sort of thing where we have outrageous increases on an annual basis.
No, everything that you, we can, again, I'm not a mathematician, and I can't calculate it right here, but all of it's laid out in the contract. We know exactly where officers are going to be, and our, our estimates from year to year reflect that. And I know that the Finance Department goes through great efforts to make sure that they've planned that out, and they've, they've got a, and I hate to point at you guys, but I know that we get our figures from you, and that, and that they've been, they've been pretty well drilled down.
So the, the step raises business, that, since it's a 5.6% increase overall, and it's based on a 2% generally, some people are getting a lot more than 5.6% on their increase, is that right?
I, I don't know how to answer that. I'm going to have to phone a friend on that, I don't know if you guys have any insight.
Mr. Burt, did you want to chime in on any of this?
Well, I don't have a contract in front of me. I can't see it, I think the most I've seen come in any individual year, the police tend to get a little bit higher than other unions, and Eileen Duggan, our town attorney, does many of the contracts around the area. She knows what others are getting, she can make sure we stay in line with that, plus arbitration rulings. 3% is the highest I've seen for a COLA given, and that's not every year of a contract, that might be one year. And then a step might be just a couple percent between, so I wouldn't imagine you'd ever have someone getting over a 5%. So there must be more going on here than we know about. I can't see ever hitting beyond a 5% in one year for a young person. I can't see, uh, ever hitting beyond a five percent in one year for a young person.
Yeah. I, I would just like to be sure that we're not going to see that every year.
I, I can say, though, that we were, a couple of years ago, our officers were paid below industry standards in this area. We, we, you know, the council was, uh, you know, good at, at, looking at that and getting them to what was, we saw as maybe pay equity.
And I, I just, for the sake of comparison, I'd just like to point out to everyone that it's a consumer price index is about one-point-five percent per year now. Uh, so we're, we're moving them ahead faster than the economy in general.
And, and as, I think the town manager, we, we do look at what Connecticut Council Municipalities has when we're doing those negotiations to make sure we're in line.
Having raised that issue, I'm sure there's going to be a parking ticket on my car.
Not at all.
Two. There will be two. Mr. Burt.
Just to point out, this would be the structure of pretty much every union contract in the state. The, the intent is you bring someone a little lower when they're not as well-trained, and you pay them as they gain that experience to get them to the point where they should be. Your alternative is you bring them right up higher, and you miss out on that savings earlier as they're being trained.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay. We have Counselor Schmidt, and Baumgartner, then Atwater, then Hede.
I just wanted to find out with the new radio system if we will be able to work with the city police department more quickly to get communications to them. I know that the nine-one-one very often was called in, and it was a delay of time. And have we overcome that problem?
I, I hope so. Um, I have had, again, I don't want to speak for the city police department, but I have had meetings with the chief and the mayor of the city about the, the value we've seen in this and gauging their interest. I think that maybe you could, you could talk to them about it when they come here.
Good. Thank you.
Counselor Baumgartner, then Atwater and Hede.
Good to see you, Chief.
How are you?
Good. How are you? Good, good. So, um, three quick questions. Um, one is the request, um, for community, uh, community policing to the level that you would like for, um, existing programming and programming you'd like to see in the future?
Is it, or?
Uh, is it to?
No, I would like to see more community policing. I'd like to have some, but, but we're trying to be fiscally responsible. I think, you know, if we had two or three officers and a supervisor doing that, that would be ideal, but I don't think we're in that environment right now. So we've tried to put together a plan where we utilize a community policing officer who organizes, organizes programs. We utilize some of our existing staff to augment that, and during the summers, we try to, uh, take the, the school resource officer out of their assignment, and put them back up patrol, and allow us to free somebody else up to do community policing. But, uh, more can be done, but we've, we're, we're in a better place now than we were a couple of years ago.
Now, for, um, for body cameras, I know, um, the town police department was one of the first, uh, really one of the first few departments in the state to get aggressive about, you know, putting, um, you know, body cams on, on officers in the town. Are there, uh, I'm sorry. Um, is the current budget sufficient to continuing that program? Are there, is there a desire to?
Well, we, we entered into a five-year agreement when we did it, so that was part of the proposal. A lot of the, the costs were covered on the front end. There are some maintenance costs, but a lot of it was covered by the grant that we were able to pursue. Specifically about body cameras, I'll, I'll use a phrase that I've used with others. It was probably not the most popular decision I've made as chief among the officers, because nobody wants to have a, a camera watching them all the time. I think that was how it was initially received. There was some trepidation. I can tell you, I regularly canvas officers. Uh, I haven't had one tell me it was a bad decision at this point. They, you know, I, I, it, we've had complaints come in where people have made, uh, voiced some concern about actions of officers. Those body cameras have proven our officers did the right thing for the right reason at the right time. Uh, we've been able to dismiss it, and, and both the deputy chief and the captain have done some of those investigations, and I think they would corroborate the fact that those body cameras have been useful in, in protecting our officers and, uh, from, from civil action, from, um, accu allegations of inappropriate actions on their part. So they've done a good investment on our, on our part.
Terrific. And, um, last question. Um, I know my, um, you know, my, my brother, he, he's on the autism spectrum, and, um, he's had, um, positive run-ins, I should say, with, uh, the police departments on, on both sides, east, east and the west. Um, but I'd just like to really thank your department, the professionalism they've shown on my brother, and I know many other families with, with special needs who, um, you know, who, uh, some days they, they struggle, um, you know, with, with, uh, you know, that family member in a given situation. But, um, I know the city, city police department has been very aggressive, uh, been very aggressive about, um, training their officers and on how to properly, um, you know, deal with children who have autism in particular. And, um, we wasn't sure of whether or not the, the town department had a similar program, or I know that you've been working with the, kind of in hand-in-hand with the city as well on, on that issue, so.
Yeah, we, we do. Thank you for the comment, first of all. Appreciate that. And, uh, our officers have been trained. In fact, we've done that training with city officers. Officer Harris from Groton City came out and did, uh, a couple of sessions of training for our officers. It was well-received. It was very good training. Um, and, you know, I, I think that it's certainly opened the eyes of our officers to, you know, understand that there's different ways you can handle individuals that may be on the autism spectrum. And it's been productive, and I think it's a good, uh, you know, it's, it provided some additional tools to our police officers when they engage someone out in the field, uh, to be a little bit more open-minded and understand there may be other ways to handle it. So it's, we have done that training. We completed it several months ago, and again, it was through assistance from, uh, from Groton City. So we appreciate that.
And from a budgetary perspective, is there anything the town can do in the future that could enhance, um, you know, those training opportunities, um, or, you know, potentially, you know, uh, you know, I know that it could be an opportunity, a grant could sufficiently, you know, cover those costs.
Specific to autism, or?
Autism or, or training, trainings for, um, officers to?
Yeah, we, um, annually, we are, um, I don't want to say saddled, but we, we, we receive additional, uh, training requirements every year through legislative action, through, um, post-re requirements, uh, and there is a cost to that. You know, every time we're putting an officer in a classroom or doing some additional training, that's one officer out of, out of a field assignment presumably, or out of a different assignment. So yes, there's cost to that. Um, we've, we've been able to really work, I think, in the last couple of years, a priority of mine is to get our supervisors the training beyond what, just the ordinary, you know, baseline training. We've, we've had our supervisory staff attend, uh, mid-level management training. We've, FBI Academy, FBI leads, um, a, a bunch of different programs through, uh, the Roger Williams University, which basically has taken over a lot of, um, law enforcement in-service training for the New England Police Chiefs Association. So there's a cost to any training. I'm a former trainer, I'm a trainer myself. I'm a certified instructor. I, I'm all in favor of it. But again, there is cost when we put someone in a classroom and we take them out of the field. And sometimes those classes do cost money.
All right.
So I hope that, I hope that answers that.
Very much so. Thank you.
Thanks.
So, um, Counselor Atwater wanted to speak again, but Counselor Hede has not spoken yet, so.
I was going to try and explain Kung Fu Zepari's situation, but it's kind of a moot point now, because we moved on, so I.
Okay.
I concede to Counselor Hede.
Counselor Hede.
Thank you for coming on with the two-point-six percent increase. Um, it seems fair and reasonable to me. Uh, I did have two questions. The, um, vehicle maintenance was moved out of the budget in two thousand and eighteen. Did that go to Fleet? Where, where did?
Public Works.
Public Works, okay. Uh, and then the second one was, um, in the town manager's introduction, he says, or he wrote, um, he asked departments to command flat service, zero percent, uh, rate change, or budget change, I guess, and a five percent cut. And just for discussion purposes, wondering what that would look like in your department?
Which, I mean?
Either zero or five.
Yeah, well, the first, first way I would start is, we're, we're trying to achieve some reductions in the overtime, as I articulated at the beginning of this. Uh, we still have the services to perform that the, the community expects, that I think the council expects. So if we were to cut certain services, I think we'd see, we'd, it's kind of a balloon. You step on one end, you'd see the other end pop up. Um, it would have a dramatic impact on us. You know, we, we deal with the same challenges every other department does when we're trying to figure out our budget and come in at a, a cost that we think we can still perform what we need to perform. But some of the services that we've talked about before with the council, like the community policing, obviously, there's things that we wouldn't be able to, to sustain. Um, and, uh, I don't know that I'm really answering the question. Would it hurt? Yeah, absolutely, it's going to, it would hurt. It would, it would hurt the delivery of services. It would hurt, um, things and programs that we, we want to provide, and I think the, uh, the town people and the council wants us to provide.
Thanks.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I'm pleased that we are continuing with community policing that we are doing as far as, um, having Officer Savino, I believe, at the public library?
Officer, yes, and, and he will, um, we will be selecting another person. Officer Savino competed in a selection process for promotion to detective. He is, he has been promoted, promoted to detective, although he's still maintaining some of those connections, because he was really good at it, and I told him he wouldn't get promoted if he totally abandoned it, and, and he understood that. But we are looking to put another person in as well.
Okay, very good. That's, um, that's good to know. And, um, your school resource officer, it seems like it would be a good fit for, um, Officer Busquet to be doing community policing during the summer, maybe, um, to supplement the other officer.
We've utilized, um, you know, there's, there's internal, um, uh, things that we need to manage. Officer Busquet does help out with some of that. Uh, we also, it also gives us the opportunity to give, uh, another officer a chance to go out and do something a little bit different, to, to groom them for maybe those positions in the future as well, where maybe they want to be a school resource officer. We can see if they're, um, they have the talent and skill sets to do that. And sometimes during the summer, Officer Busquet would go to patrol. Some days, he'll do community policing, but it gives us the opportunity to take a person that's been on patrol and move them into that position for a little while, for a couple of months to the year, so.
And I just wanted to echo the sentiment that Counselor Baumgartner raised as far as, um, the autism training. I was very pleased when you worked with the City of Groton to train the town officers. I thought that was wonderful. Um, and I just wanted to encourage when you're doing hiring, um, to, I, I think it's very important for the community, and especially for the young people in our community, that our public safety officers, our peace officers, um, look like our community. So I would encourage you to, um, do your best to, to have that happen.
I assure you, we do. We, we are very, uh, we do engage with certain segments of the community to try and get people from Groton, from, uh, different, uh, demographic groups to, we try to recruit people from all different walks of life and all different, uh, backgrounds. Uh, as I said, the challenge that we're dealing with right now is, is getting people, not just to apply, but getting people through that process. And that has been a challenge for us, as, as it has been for every department of the region.
Thank you. Counselor O'Brian wanted to say something?
Yeah. Just one question. Um, are we going to be able to have somebody on foot patrol in Mystic this summer?
We try to do that. Um, we have the ability to do that. There's some contractual things that we were able to implement, which are good. That's part of our community policing structure, so, yes, defining dates and times when we can do it. I, I can't do that for you right now, but we do have, uh, folks down there. I've gone down there myself to make sure that we've got officers down there walking a beat during the summer, and that's when we get our influx of, of visitors to Mystic, so.
Right.
So the short answer is yes. I guess I could have said it that way.
With the improved communication that we have now, is, do you think it would be possible occasionally to have a police officer get out of his car and walk around in some of the large shopping centers?
They do that. We try to encourage that, but that's the same officer that's, that's answering radio calls, so if they're, you know, as much as we like that and they like that, if they're out at a larceny complaint, or, um, you know, missing person complaint, or burglary, those are the same officers that, that are patrolling that area, so it's, it's tough to say we're going to have an officer walking through at this time and this day. They could be at a motor vehicle accident. So we do encourage our officers to get out and walk around. That is part of our community-oriented philosophy, um, but sometimes it's just not feasible.
So I understand that. I would just really be very happy if the effort was made so that occasionally you see somebody, a police officer walking around in it, it's.
And I'll make sure he has his parking ticket booked, too.
Yeah, I bet you will. Okay, I'll say no more.
Okay. I think everyone has spoken, and I think we've been pretty thorough in our questions. So if there's nothing further, we will vote on account ten-twenty-four, public safety, and the amount on the floor is eight million five-hundred-sixty-three-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars. We are at nine counselors now. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So move unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen?
Thank you very much.
We are going to, um, account ten-sixty-three next, which is on page one forty-nine. So account ten-sixty-three is the Groton Public Library. Hello?
Good evening.
Good evening. And as soon as we move a number, we'll ask you to introduce yourselves. So, um, page one forty-nine is where the figure is. Counselor Franco.
I'd like to move Groton Public Library, count number one-zero-six-three, at one million six-hundred-eighty-nine-thousand-and-seventy-seven dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Franco, seconded by Zepari. Would you like to introduce your staff?
I'd love to.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening. My name is Jennifer Mealy. I'm the director of Groton Public Library, and I have with me tonight Cindy Wright, who is the manager of circulation and technical services. I also have with me Michael Spellman, who's our manager of public services. Newly minted. Um, the town managers.
Could you move that mic a little closer to you?
Sure.
Thank you. You used to be in the library, I guess.
Um, the town manager's twenty-twenty budget proposal supports funding, uh, Groton Public Library at current year levels. There is an increase in personnel services attributed to anticipated salary adjustments. There is also a small increase in operating expenses related to increased or resumed maintenance fees associated with specific li- library vendors. After many years of continued budget reductions and virtually no growth, I am respectfully asking you to consider maintaining this level service budget proposal in order to continue allowing Groton Public Library to provide exemplary service to the two-hundred-thousand-plus people that walk through our doors and beyond every day. My staff and I welcome the opportunity to address any questions you may have about the library's budget.
I'd like to make a, I'd like to move. Excuse me?
Amendment.
Okay. Do you want to let them finish, and then we could do that?
Okay.
Go ahead.
So just, um, I welcome the opportunity to answer any questions that you may have.
Counselor Parker.
I'd like to move a new number, one million six-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-seven.
Could you repeat it one more time, please?
One million six-five-three-two-seven-seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Franco. Would you like, you can have the floor to explain your motion.
This takes into account from last week's meeting of the $35,800, which would be a decrease in their personnel services and operating expenses, well, personnel technically, of $10,369 because we just moved two positions to a lower rate.
That is correct. That is something that you voted on the last time I was here regarding the Library One and a part-time library assistant position.
Do we have questions for the library staff? If not, I do. I'll start. When we're on page 148, under your library fast facts...
Yes.
You have 211,000 people visited the library last year. That's, that's pretty amazing. How does that compare with our outside agency libraries? So you are the true public library for the Town of Groton. We have two other libraries that are private entities that we support partially with tax dollars. So how does that rank as far as the number of people walking in the doors at Bill and the number of people walking in the doors at Mystic Noank?
Well, I can tell you, I just did some review of statistics that we put through our annual statistics to the state. It's a requirement. And I do know that in past years Mystic and Noank has had about 50,000 to 65,000 people walk through their doors. And to be honest, Bill would be significantly less than that. And, you know, just as another picture I found very interesting, did a little research on, you know, other organizations that could be rather large around the area. Mystic Seaport, in fact, has about 259,000 visitors, at least in their 2017 year. And the fact that we're, I mean, we're, we're just a regional organization here locally and they're a world-class museum that people go see. So equating that, we have a difference of about 30,000 people that walk through our doors. So we're seeing quite a number of people that are local, Groton residents and, you know, towns around the surrounding area that use us. So just a little tidbit.
Thank you. Council Zepary?
We just had a motion, amended motion, to reduce the budget that you requested. It has been appropriated here. Do you have any comments to make in response to that? Do you think that's an implosion into what you, your ability to continue to function? Or is that a reason, do you consider that a reasonable adjustment?
Well, I could have alluded to the fact that yes, 35,000, we're going to be seeing savings next year because of our reorganization priorities that we're trying to do. However, the reason why I didn't bring that up immediately was because, as I said earlier, the continued growth, we don't have any continued growth and we just, every single year for the last, since 2010, have realized a percentage decrease every single year. And we're getting busier every single year. So it really equates to, we would prefer the level service for the simple fact that we see more people and we're seeing more service and more people need help. And so to answer your question, you know, we would like to see the level service budget, but we can understand that by reorganizing, there may have to be some things there.
Thank you.
Council Atwater?
You have listed that there's 163,460 items in your collection. I'm assuming that includes books and so forth. And 298,349 were borrowed. So that, to me, says that everyone borrowed one of each book at least twice. Is that a fair...
On average, it equates that. Of course, some best sellers go out 10 to 12 times a year. You know, when a class might sit there, but...
But on average, okay. I would like to comment on the 211,000 people visiting. I'm sure that that's also people coming back again and again, whereas people going to Mystic Seaport, probably it's only the one time. So that is an interesting tidbit, but also interesting what you're looking at. I am, I guess fascinated that the library fines for, is that just for late books? It's $13,877.
Those are for my books.
Your books?
It fines lost books, damaged items, miscellaneous fees.
That is just lost books. I mean overdue books. 10 cents a day adds up if you don't return a book.
That really surprised me, especially I recall growing up and so with two weeks was the limit on a book and you do three weeks and I just, I think you should probably increase the fines to encourage people to return the book sooner, but thank you.
Council Heath?
This is more of just, again, a discussion question. You do a great job at the library. I'm not suggesting anything. I'm just asking in terms of funding. The outside libraries get a lot of their funding from fundraising, grants, all, you know, that kind of thing. As a town-sponsored library, are you not able to get the same kinds of grants, you know, in terms of organization? You know what I mean?
Well, they're partly association libraries, so there is a different funding structure. I mean, we are 100% taxpayer department. We can certainly go out for grants and we have in the past. So, I mean, we continue to do our due diligence to look for those opportunities. I don't know if that's answering your question, but...
And we also have Friends of the Library.
Yes. We also do have a Friends of the Library group that helps support us with the small things or, you know, or just items that we cannot afford in our operating budget. Thankfully for that support.
There's been a lot of grants for the technology. That seems to be where there's a lot of opportunity for grants, like for the, of the video recording equipment, that whole studio, a lot of that's grant-funded.
The studio, the local history, we received state grants for that as well, so yes, we can apply for them and we do.
Thank you.
Council Obera?
Yeah. Could you explain again why the adjustment? I didn't catch why.
You weren't here.
Yeah, I wasn't here, so...
It went from a level...
Yes, so we had a Level Two librarian position that was vacated by hiring Michael here. And so we proposed to fill that with a librarian one position. And that librarian one position was at a lower level salary. And then we also are looking to fill a library assistant position that is soon to be, get vacated with a 20-hour a week position. And that, of course, is filling for a full-time. So we're doing some minor adjustments within the organization and we're realizing cost savings because of that.
Sorry, glad to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
So what this, what this does, if we look at the lines, the columns, rather, though the first amended motion actually puts us in below what their number was last year.
That is correct, yes.
Council Zepary?
I'd just like to thank you for your efforts in becoming more efficient. I wish all of the departments would act that way. It makes the decisions that we have to make so much easier.
Thank you.
So thank you.
So will the, the reduction in the amount be reflected solely in the personnel expenses from those two positions? Or is it going to affect your operating as far as circulation, services, et cetera?
No, it would be in the personnel.
Strictly personnel?
Mm-hmm.
Any other discussion? All right, so again, just refresh everyone's memory, we're going to be voting on the first amended figure first. If that would fail, then we would go back to the main motion. So we are on function 1063, Groton Public Library, and the number we will be voting first is $1,653,277. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Me.
That passes eight in favor, one opposed, Obera, and zero abstentions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, are you staying for the next item as well? So we are on page 153, which is, I never know how to say this, Borrow It or Borrow I.T.?
Borrow It.
Borrow It, Connecticut, function number 3310. And we're at Council Heath, I believe.
So I'll make a motion to move $18,300.
Second. Moved by Heath, seconded by Parker. Would you like to discuss this at all?
So Borrow It was formerly known as Connecticut Card and this is the dispersment of state aid received by the town through its participation in the Borrow It CT program. This allows residents of any town in the state to use their library cards to borrow materials from any participating library. That's what it's used for, but it can only be used on library services.
Are there questions for the Director?
Can I just...
Yes, Council Franco.
So it's anywhere, any library or just...
No, just specifically to us. I mean...
In terms of where you could borrow from?
Other people. You can use any library in the state of Connecticut with a public library card.
Seeing no further discussion, we will vote on function 3310, an amount of $18,300. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have one account that was added today and that is Groton Long Point. And the summary is on 186 and then the in-depth is in your appendix A on page 171 of the appendix. So I'm not sure if we want to get both things ready before we begin. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Fine, thank you. Give us one second, please. Give me one second, please. It sounds like everybody else is ready. Okay, so generally how we do this is we have two, we have three accounts within Groton Long Point, so we move, we move each cost center. So if you look on page 186, there are three cost centers, 10910 for police, 10911 for highway maintenance, and 10912 for street lighting. So we'll be voting each individual cost center. Okay, so I believe we're on Council Obera, so if you could move 10910, please.
On page 186?
Yes, please.
The total operations?
No. Just the line item for police, please, the first one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I moved a figure of $305,000.
Second.
Moved by Obera and seconded by Atwater. Good evening. Could you just introduce yourself for the public, please?
Absolutely. Actually, thank you for having me. My name is Mike Flynn. I'm the President of the Groton Long Point Association. We're asking for the $305,000 for our police department. Actually, we use our own services, as you know, from Groton Long Point. We have our own staff, actually, police chief, four officers, and do the patrolling actually. And most of ours is community policing. We base actually most of our operation on that. Summertime is extremely heavy at that point there and actually it takes a tremendous amount of service from our officers. And we do have a staff of four part-time officers and four CSOs, our community service officers, which are used in the summer.
I'm looking at a 14.6% increase?
Yes.
I'm just curious because the town had a 2.6% increase and the city had a 5% increase. So could you just explain why...
Certainly, actually, over the years, actually, there's been a decrease and it happened about, actually, maybe 10, 12 years ago at that point there, maybe a little bit less. And we were trying to actually to get our funding back up to, it's close to a 40%. We're about 39% right now at that point with that figure. The city has a 50% reimbursement at that point. We're just trying to get up to a figure that we can survive with at that point there. And we're not asking for what the city has, but we'd like to get our figure up to be a little more realistic, if we could.
So it's not necessarily added personnel at this point?
No, it's not.
You're just looking for a higher contribution from the town?
Based on the taxes, yes.
Do I see a hand over here?
No.
Council Zepary?
I noticed that last year you got a 9.2% increase for the police department.
Correct, actually. Again, same reason, actually, trying to get the figure up actually to be more of a equity figure at that point there. We're not asking for what the city actually gets funded at that point there, just a little bit more on our side.
We're, we're interested in finding out what your actually, your costs are so we can meet those costs rather than get you up to some figure that was, that existed some time ago.
Actually, our costs are actually, it's 39% is $305,000, so our cost is about $700 and somewhat $1,000 for police service.
Where does the rest of the money come from?
Our mill rate, actually, for Groton Long Point. We tax ourselves for the balance. Okay. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions? Council Franco and then Heath.
So you have four part-timers and four full-time?
Correct, both the police chiefs.
And how do you decide how much staff you need?
We actually only have, we don't like to always say that, we have one officer on duty at any one time at that point there for full shifts at that point and that's seven days a week, 24 hours a day. So really, we don't have like so many extra bodies actually there. It's, the part-timers are only used for off-shift, active vacation time, sick time, that type of stuff at that point. So realistically, we have four officers that maintain the main shift. And our police chief is a active officer as well, too. He handles shifts as well.
And have you had this number of personnel, how long has it been at this rate, like the 4 and 4?
Actually, we've had that status, I guess, at least for 15 years.
15 years?
At least, at least.
And when were you saying that, when were you, did your funding cut?
Oh, gosh. I don't know, actually, probably actually it was a long time before I was on the board actually there, but probably about in the 10, 12 years ago.
10 to 12 years.
Everybody was going through a trying time at that point.
Thank you.
Council Heath?
Are your radios interactive or are you able to communicate with the town police?
Yes, we are, actually. We were able to get on the same deal that the two chiefs actually had worked out, our chief and the chief of the Groton Town Police. We were able to fund it through our capital improvement program actually for that and we were able to work together with the town actually and we're not great.
All right. I'll make a second motion. For $272,946.
One more time, please. 272,946?
Yes, ma'am.
For cost center 10910.
Correct. Second.
Moved by Heath, seconded by Zepary. Council Heath, would you like to speak to your amendment?
It's 2.6%, so it's the same as the town police. Just don't think it's time to increase it beyond that yet.
Council Zepary, did you wish to speak to your second?
You say the overall cost for your lease to about $730,000?
700, I think it's 700 and...
714, 750.
714, thank you very much.
714. And you have roughly, you have four full-timers and four part-timers.
Correct.
Would that be equivalent to about six full-timers?
No, actually, because the part-timers are only used actually when we need them actually to cover a shift or a sickness at that point there. They aren't a regularly staffed group.
So it would be less than six full-timers?
Oh, absolutely. At that point, it may even be less than five. They're only used when we need them.
So we're talking about something in excess of $120,000 per police officer, is that right?
Well, actually, it also covers utilities, cost actually for the police officer and everything else, yes, sir.
You haven't broken that out for us, though?
No, we actually didn't, actually. We use actually three different breakdowns actually that's shown right there for our budget scenario.
It's on page 172 in appendix A, Council Zepary. So if you go to appendix A of the big budget book and then you go page 172, they show for Groton Long Point Public Safety, personnel 513, 930, other 178, I don't know what other is, and utilities 22, 820 for a total budget for 714, 750. And then they break out, the requested appropriations is 305. The total budget does not reflect the chief, correct?
Correct.
Just as the city does. So it's 172 in appendix A.
Mine is 172 different than your 172?
I don't know. Can I say?
Mine is children first.
Yeah, mine is too.
I think it's 185, 186, 27.
It's in A.
It's at the very end of it.
It's in A.
And I have children first.
No, that's 73.
Oh.
The, they, there's a vertical line just before the numbers. Next year we'll have to change that.
Thank you.
So it's page, vertical line, and then look for 172 after that.
I did, uh...
Did you find it?
No, I didn't, but I'll take your word for it.
Is everybody else there?
Yeah.
Okay. So personnel is 513, 930 for four full-time and four part-time. What is the other while Council Zepary is looking, please?
Oh, they actually do, and also the CSOs we use in the summertime are in that figure as well, too.
CSOs?
Yeah, community service officers. They help actually the on-duty officer.
And then the utilities is the fuel for the vehicles, I assume?
Fuel for the vehicles, fuel for the building at that point there.
One more page. There you go. Council Obera?
Are you able to get your util, oh, utilities. I was thinking about gas, sorry.
We actually buy the gas from the town actually at that point, yes.
Thank you.
So the first amended motion represents an increase from what the estimated total is for 2019. And it's approximately a $6,000 increase over what the estimate for current year is. Did you have questions now that you have the chart?
No, I, I think that the, I think that the amended amount is reasonable.
Council Atwater?
Now that we've looked at appendix A or whatever, if you've got other costs, as you said, is CFO to help in the summer, so your personnel costs are really up close to $700,000.
No, our personnel costs are $513,000.
But I, maybe I didn't understand, what is the other, 178,000?
Actually, between insurance at that point, cost of the vehicles, maintenance of the vehicles as well, too.
I'm sorry, I thought you said it was to help out the officers and...
Oh, no, that actually, under personnel, when they said how many people were there, is the four officers, the four part-time and the four CSOs. I apologize.
So other is not the community service officers?
No, other is actually... No, other is actually, is actually, maintenance of the vehicles, cost, actually, for insurance, cost, actually, for the building itself as well as that part.
I misunderstood that as well.
Okay, I apologize.
That figure does seem kind of high, I guess, but I have one concern, I guess, with Counselor Heath's motion, and that is that if you, if you only, if they're trying to get back to a certain point, I don't think necessarily do it at 14.6%, but if you're only doing 2.6%, just, I don't know, with pay raises, with increased costs or whatever, they're probably going to be slipping behind, so I would, I would think a number a little higher than 2.6 might make sense, but I haven't had time to propose a Second Amendment, but I just, just wanted to put that out there, that maybe, maybe that's something we should consider.
Well, there are other counselors who wish to speak, so if you'd like to take care of that in the meantime. Counselor Parker, I know, wanted to speak.
Do you know approximately how many CSOs you hire in the summer? Because that's separate from the four full-time officers.
Correct, four CSOs are hired in the summer.
Okay, that's not the part-timers?
No.
Okay. So four, so technically, it's four full-time, four part-time, and four CSO.
Four CSOs. The CSOs are usually college students that are actually into the police programs. We get quite a few of them from central Connecticut, sometimes from eastern, depending on what they're going into, and it gives them a good, on the job, actually, at that point, working with an officer during the summer.
Counselor Franco?
I'm sorry, I just, I didn't know if they were paid?
Oh, yes, they are, they're paid, please.
And they're, I'm sorry, just, can you just say one more time, are the CSOs part-time or full-time?
Oh, they're full-time in the summer, yes.
All right, thank you.
But they're paid at a lower rate because they're college students and not actual police op?
Correct, yes, yeah. They're not under our negotiated contract with the officers.
Right, okay.
Counselor Franco, did you have other questions?
No, thank you.
Counselor Atwater, do you want us to come back to you?
Please, I'm close, but I'm not?
You're close. What else do we have?
Want to sing a little song?
No, you don't want me to sing, trust me, trust me on that one. All right, so, let's see. So the insurance for the vehicles, the insurance for the officers, all of that is the other?
Correct.
Vehicle maintenance, so the utilities is pure the fuel for the vehicles, right?
Fuel for the vehicle, fuel for the building, that type of stuff, yes.
Is this the building, is this the casino building, or is it all in one?
No, it's the police department.
Separate entity.
Could I ask one more question?
Counselor Park?
Would it be possible for next year to actually break down the other?
Certainly.
Because at least to show is?
Absolutely.
I think it confuses a little bit, because it doesn't say what it's, each thing's for.
No problem at all, we can do that, actually, there. We just use, these are the headings that we use on ours, actually, but glad they do that.
Thank you. Counselor Atwater asked to be recognized.
I would like to make a motion for the amount to be 283,588.
Could you repeat that, please? Moved by Atwater, I'll second for discussion purposes, seconded by Granatowski. And would you like to give your rationale for the number?
I took the 9.2% that Counselor Zepary pointed out from 18 to 19, and I subtracted the 2.6% that Counselor Heath proposed, and came up with an increase of 6.6%, and that's what produces my number.
Okay, so, just to clarify, we have three numbers on the floor, that's it, that we can have at this point. The second number is 283,588, which is a 6.6% increase, correct?
That's correct, yes.
The first amended number is 272,946, which is a 2.6% increase, and then the requested number, which is the 305,000. Is there discussion on any of the numbers or any of the motions? Counselors of Perry?
Can you repeat the number for each, what is the amount for each of the two motions?
Yes, so the second amended motion, which is the one we will vote first, is 283,588, 283,588. That's the second motion. The first amended motion is 272,946, 272,946, and the main motion is the one that's in the book, the 305. Did you want to discuss, or was that your question?
I wanted to discuss, and I've lost my page already. I'm gonna read it.
172.
Which one?
172.
It's almost 172.
Yeah. I noticed that the personnel charges for the police department now are 513,930, and you have roughly five full-time people.
Four full-time people, the four part-timers, actually.
But the four part-time amount to approximately one full-time.
Yeah, again, that's, it's depending on the year, the amount of vacation time, the amount of sick time that happens at that point, that's what.
But we're still talking about an average pay of over $100,000 per person.
Well, if you include, actually, the benefits that they get at that point, minus insurance, and the other things at that point there, actually, our contract, that we have a three-year contract, we were about 2% increase, 2.5% increase, and I think, or 2.25 and 2.5% increase over our three years, which was less than the town's contract at that point there, in terms of it.
What is the average salary for a police officer in Groton Long Point?
I don't have the average salary, sir, I don't know that off the top of my head, can't tell you that. We have one sergeant and then three officers. Thank you.
And this is, that's what Counselor Parker requested for next year, correct?
Yeah.
The breakdowns?
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
That, on the 513, 930, 513, on the personnel amount, the four full-time officers, four part-time officers, and then, don't forget, we also have summertime help, so that's included in there, and they get a dollar amount, but they're lower rate because they are not police officers.
Correct.
They're college students hoping to become police officers. So technically, he has, and they're probably working part-time themselves, so you technically...
Actually, they're working eight-hour shifts.
No, they work eight-hour shifts, so they're working full-time during the summer. So there's a little bit of difference there to be included in that current amount he has on the paper. Sorry, I just can't say numbers.
That's okay. So then, on any one shift, you would have one, at least one full police, full-time, a part-time, and a CSO?
No, only actually, one full-time officer at any shift. In the summertime, they have a CSO with them, only in the summer months.
And then where does the part-time fit in?
Covering, actually, an officer who may be out sick at that point, on vacation.
Okay.
At that point there, that's actually there, and the reason for four of them is to have a backup, a backup, at that point. They aren't paid unless they're actually out, unless they're actually working.
Counselor Obray?
In the, in the wintertime, don't you go down to one officer?
I have one officer per shift.
Per shift?
Yeah.
So you have three offices in the wintertime?
Well, no, actually, staggered shift, you end up having a full week, you have four officers for the amount of time during the shift, because you always have that extra two days on the shift at that point there that needs coverage.
Okay. I'm sorry, Counselor Schmitt and then Atwater?
I just wondered if that included other post-employment benefits for the personnel, pensions, any pensions that you have?
Yes, that's in that figures as well, too, yes. It's all the benefits of the officers, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Atwater?
You just made a statement that's confusing me. You get four full-time people.
Correct.
Covers the shifts.
Yes.
You have four part-time, which fill in for sick or vacation or whatever, so doesn't that mean that you're really funding for full-time positions, period?
No, because if they're off, let's say they're in vacation time, but someone has to cover the shift, and you still have to pay for that cost as well.
So you're still paying the person that's on vacation, you're sick or whatever?
Exactly, at that point there, or sick, or out, or in training, and that kind of stuff.
I just have to say that I appreciate what David did, but I still think the 6.6% increase is higher than what we've been working with in most other accounts, so I myself couldn't support that for what it's worth.
So the second amended figure would be the first one voted at that point, if that fails, then another amendment could be put on the floor.
I don't want to put a new one, I'm happy with Conrats, if we get to that.
Okay. I just need a minute to look at things here, so. So we are at three motions, 14, 14% increase was the original request versus the town. The town's a 2.6 and the city a 5. Okay. Is there any further discussion? All right, so we're going to be voting, you're going to have to bear with me so I can keep track of things, we're going to be voting in a reverse order in which they were put on the floor, so the Second Amendment figure is the one we're going to move first. This is for Cost Center 10910, Groton Long Point Police. All those in favor of 283,588, please raise your hand. Parker? All those opposed, please raise your hand. Bumgardner? Franco? Heath? Granatowski? Obray? Schmidt? And Zepary? And I think there are no abstentions then. So that motion fails, two in favor, seven opposed, zero abstentions. So that takes us to the first amended figure for 10910, 272,946. Is there discussion on the first amended figure? This represents the 2.6% increase. Seeing no discussion, we'll vote on 272,946. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Bumgardner? Franco? Heath? Granatowski? Obray? Zepary? All those opposed? Parker? And Schmidt? Let me just do my count, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 abstentions? Atwater? 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 in favor, 2 opposed, 1 abstention, that motion passes. Okay, we are on to 10911, Highway Maintenance, and this is back on 186. Counselor Atwater, if you could move 10911, Highway Maintenance, please.
Groton Long Point Highway Maintenance, account 10911, I moved the amount of 217,840.
Second. Moved by Atwater and seconded by Schmidt. And this is on page 173 in Appendix A, if you need detail. Did you want to present anything on this?
Actually, just review, actually, we do every year at that point there, this includes the maintenance of Groton Long Point for the roads at that point there, repair, actually, and maintenance of the roads. We also do our own snow plowing in there as well, traffic control when we do work, actually, there, and maintenance of our vehicle as well, too. I did actually put, and I may have put it in the wrong place, I apologize to the council if I did, we put in a CIP request at that point there for replacement of our pickup truck, we purchased five years ago, it is needing a little more maintenance every year than it used to, and rusting didn't help too much either, so we're looking to there, but I'm not sure if that's the proper place to put the CIP in that figure, or it should have been a separate figure, I don't know.
We'll ask Mr. Burke that question.
There's nothing really wrong with it, it's a pretty small amount, and it's too late to do it as a CIP because it didn't go in the list of the planning commission for comment, so it would have to be handled here.
The city highway budget would put it in the same number, so I think that's probably not the right place to put it.
In their public works budget?
Mm-hmm.
So then, does, I was going to ask, we are at a 21% increase, and is that reflective of the CIP being placed in here?
Basically, yes, at that point. The rest of it, it's just the increase in doing more storm drain work and that type of stuff, attaching more roads.
Okay. All right, is there discussion on the Public Works Department? Counselor Heath?
Actually, already figured that out, so I'm in support of this number.
Okay. Anyone else? Counselor Franco, I'm sorry, Franco and then Obray?
So you're asking to replace the public works truck for $20,000?
Trade the old one in, actually, for that part of it there, replace, hopefully, our trade-in is going to be pretty good, we hope, it's not going to be a lot, man, we don't get a fancy one, actually, it's just one that has four-wheel drive and just regular thing, to just be used, actually, for, maintenance, actually, for the work around the point.
Okay.
So it's not used for plowing or anything of that, but there's no plow or anything on it.
So you're increasing by 38,000, and your CIP is for 20, so what is the other 18,000?
For the maintenance work at the roads, actually, at that point there. We were able to do some of the roads with the five-year bond, which is great, a lot of the other roads need a lot of work at that point, as well as the storm drains at that point, and we're having some backflow issues with the roads, and that's basically maintenance of the storm drains, meaning, actually, from the pipes that go out into the ocean areas, new valve work, rusting, etc.
Do you have further questions? Now that's all. Counselor Obray?
I'm working on an under, I, I'm not understanding something clearly, so before I suggest something different. Part of this increase was to cover something that didn't go in a different portion of the budget, is that correct?
Correct.
And how much was that?
20,000 for a truck. And Counselor Heath told us that the city does the same thing, they put their CIPs right in the operating budget for their highway department.
Okay.
Did you have something you wanted to say? If not, I have a question.
Keep going.
Okay, so I had a question. I'm looking at 173 in Appendix A, and we're looking at drainage and pavement maintenance, and it says service contract. Does the town do any of this work?
No, not for that part of it there, we have a outside contractor that does that. They do it a lot cheaper than they're able to because of the time commitments the town has to. We work with the town, they do our paving.
Right.
And they've done a great job with us at that point, the last few years, but that's, this would be over and above what they do, and they, actually, it's just not a time commitment that they have for us, and it's a low price that we get from a local contractor.
I have a weird question, it's something that we discussed when we had our joint city-town council meeting with regard to pre-wetted salt, I think is what it was called, and instead of putting the salt down as granular, they wet it so that it goes down as liquid onto the roads first, and supposedly, it keeps so much of the runoff going into the, to the water, do you do that as well?
Actually, we pick up our supplies from the town, we buy the town, the stuff from the town, so the sand, the salt, and the mix is about here.
So it does go down as a liquid?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Counselors of Perry?
We have, I'm, we have figures of what you're asking for, but we have nothing to compare it with for what you used last year or what you asked for last year.
For the different light items of the total budget?
On the GLP Public Works Department Roads, on page 173, would this information be someplace else? I see for drainage, you have, for drainage, you have 26,950 that you want this year. How much did you get last year for that, and how much did you spend?
Our total last year was 179,813, total budget at that point there, and we spent all our budgets, we don't have any extra PW account at that, but most times, it goes over, and we have to for damage to roads and repairing roads, we don't get to, not to repair the road at that point. If it costs more money, we just take it from, we may have in savings left over from the mill rate.
From what?
From our mill rate that we actually taxed, so we don't, it's not a fully funded system sometimes, because actually, things happen during the year, it just happens, but we can't come back at that point there, so it's fully expended out, especially, the service contracts are already, are expended, actually, fully at that point, we do the contracts, so the little that's left actually ends up being what we have left to spend for repair.
I am so unclear about this, that I would move that we make the, for a new figure on highway maintenance?
One moment, please, one moment. So this is for, I have to write this down, 10911, you're making an amendment?
Yes.
First Amendment figure?
Yes. To 185,813.
One more time, please?
185,813.
That was moved by Zepary, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Atwater. Counselors of Perry, would you like to provide your rationale?
Well, we really don't know, we don't have apples to compare with apples here, we really don't know what the linear... We really don't know what the linear progression has been in their maintenance requirements with the data that's put forth. What we do know is that they've needed, they used a hundred and seventy-nine, eight-one-three before, and this gives them six thousand dollars more than that to just keep up with the pace that they've had. I don't know how else, you know, it's almost arbitrary, but we're dealing with insufficient information to make a better decision.
So, would you like to request for the next budget that you have more detail as Councilor Parker did?
Absolutely. Yes.
Councilor Franco.
I, I think the number you're moving does not include a CIP of this twenty thousand for the truck that they're asking for.
Okay.
Well, they won't be able to buy a truck.
Then, I think you're right.
So, I'd like to make a motion to move a different number?
I would amend my own motion, and it'll only be one on the floor if you, if you please.
We need to, we need, we need to have a second amendment, so, either way, it's going to be amended. So, Councilor Franco, do you wish to make an amendment to ten nine one one?
Yes, as I'm looking here, I just wanted to clarify why I'm doing this. The overall increase for the public works and for the town is five point six percent. So, if I give them off their base number last year a six percent increase, and I add the truck on to it on top of that, that brings us to two one zero, five zero one.
Can you repeat that, please?
Two one zero.
Yep.
Five zero one.
Moved by Franco. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Zepari.
If, may I withdraw my first amend, amended?
You can't. I'm on top of you. I'm on top of your amendment.
All right, please, please. Councilor Franco, did you wish to address any further, your amendment?
Yeah, that, I just explained it.
So, you're good?
I'm good.
So, I'll open the floor to other people.
Sure.
Anyone else? Did you want to address it now?
I think it's a good improvement. I think she's put some thought into it, and it's a reasonable approach.
Councilor Heed?
What does a seven thousand dollar cut, which is basically being proposed, what does that do?
Probably not as many valves or storm drains to be done at that point there, but we may not have a choice, so we'll just have to do them anyway. Our problem is actually, it's just, we're ending up with actually change of, you know, the C at that point there that we have, and the maintenance of them is getting more and more needed at that point there. So, a lot of these date back to ten, twenty, thirty years old, so. And some of the roads, actually, we've been able to replace, actually, with the town's help at that point, have been great to stem that flow of the problems, but there's still a lot of roads to do, so.
So, we have a couple of things we need to take care of. So, Mr. Burt has last year's version of the chart that's on one seventy-three, and he would be willing to read that to you. So, this matches what you're seeing in the chart on one seventy-three.
Under drainage, last year it was twenty-seven thousand, five hundred. So, I believe it's down five fifty this year. Pavement, pavement maintenance was at fifty-two thousand, eight hundred. It's about, I think it's fifty-two eighty increase. Snow and ice removal was at fifty-five thousand even, so fifty-nine hundred, sixty-dollar increase this year. Roadside maintenance was at thirty-six thousand, two hundred, which I think would be, this year would be a thirty-six hundred, twenty-dollar increase. Traffic control was at forty-seven, forty-four, so this would be a five hundred and fifty-six dollar increase. General support was at thirty-eight hundred, fifty dollars, which would be a three hundred and fifty-dollar increase for this year's amount. And vehicle was at twenty-three hundred, which would be two hundred and thirty dollars more for this year. So, I think, a quick math, someone double-checked that, but it looks like it's about fifteen thousand, four hundred and forty-six more for this year, plus the twenty thousand for the, for the vehicle. So, that'd be about thirty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-six increase for this year. It's about thirty-five thousand dollar increase, counting the twenty thousand for the vehicle.
So, fifteen thousand dollar increase aside from the vehicle?
Right.
Okay, we have RTM moderator Evan here, who is ex officio, and she would like to ask a question. If you could come up, please, and use a microphone. I believe she's ex officio.
Yeah.
No, we're ex officio for RTM, but I will recognize you anyhow. Come on up.
I think I am. That's the only reason I raised my hand, but thank you very much, Mayor Granatoski. I just had a quick question, which is on snow and ice removal. It says sidewalks as part of that. Don't homeowners shovel their own sidewalks?
No, no. It's under.
Okay, so, I'm just curious, does the town shovel sidewalks for homeowners?
No.
Thank you.
The city does.
No, the city does not.
It's not?
City does not shovel sidewalks for homeowners. Okay, so, did you want to speak again?
Yes, I, Mr. Burt, you had calculated the difference in the, in the present request from the, from the amount used last year or appropriated last year. Could we, could you tell us what five point six percent of the appropriation last year was?
Five point one percent.
Five point six. That was the number you were using, right?
Well, that's what public works did last year. I did it at six percent.
You did it at six percent, but it was five point six, wasn't it?
Public works for this year is five point six increase.
Okay.
That would be ten thousand, four sixty.
Ten thousand, four sixty.
Right.
So, if we added ten thousand, four sixty to last year's, and then added another twenty thousand for the truck, what would that come out to be?
I believe that's Councilor Franco's number, correct?
Yeah, but I went at six, that, six percent.
So, you went slightly above, correct? Councilor Baumgartner?
More of a clarifying question. What was the budget for highway maintenance? So, I think that would be cost center five in the public works, town, town public works proposed budget.
Take a look in your book there.
The percentage increase. So, that's more of a technical question. Maybe Cindy could help with that.
That was five point six, right?
As opposed to, I think the five point six percent increase is public works.
Would you like to take a recess for a few minutes? Why don't we take a five-minute recess, and everybody can kind of get their thoughts together, and then we will come back. So, we're going to recess at seven, what does that say? I'm getting glare from where I'm sitting because I'm short.
Seven forty.
Seven forty. We're going to recess at seven forty for five minutes. Thank you. We're out of recess at seven fifty-one. And just to recap where we are, we have the main motion for cost center one zero nine one one highway maintenance. We have two amendments on the floor. So, right now, we have a second amended figure, which will be the first one. We'll vote for two hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and one dollars. If that would fail, the first amendment is on the floor at one eighty-five, eight-one-three, and if that fails, we are back to the main motion of two seventeen, eight, four, zero.
So, the, the first amendment is one eight-five?
The first amendment, which you made, is a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
I made that.
We will not, yes, you did. We will not be getting to that motion unless the second amendment fails. We could go all the way back to the main amendment, or the, the main motion if both of the amendments fail. So, at this point, is there discussion on the second amended figure? Is everyone clear with the second amended figure? Councilor Heed?
Actually, a question on the, I mean, that's okay.
Go ahead.
All right. On the, I guess I didn't notice that before the snow and ice removal from sidewalks, so the town is being asked to pay for removal from sidewalks. Is that right?
It's always been in the budget, actually, since we requested. It's never been out of the budget.
We don't really have a whole lot of sidewalks in Groton Longpoint, though.
We have a lot of sidewalks in Groton Longpoint. Many of the sidewalks aren't in front of the homes. They're on the marsh areas or the beach areas. There's no home near that.
Gotcha, okay. So, that's normal to, the city would do the same thing. They remove snow from sidewalks that are not in front of homes. I know because I get complaints from people who have, have homes. But, okay, I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Burt, MS four, stormwater. Is that, so Groton Longpoint would be subject to that as well? The standards?
Every place would be.
Everywhere?
Not an expert on that, though, so.
So, your, your service contracts, then, would have to take into account that as far as the cleaning of the, the drains and making sure that the quality of the runoff is appropriate?
And that means, it leads us to the replacement of a lot of the valves.
Okay. All right, is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we're going to vote on the second amended figure for one zero nine one one. This figure is two hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and one dollars. All those in favor, raise your hand, please. Baumgartner, Parker, Franco?
Everybody.
Heed, Granatoski, Aubrey, Atwater. It's unanimous. I'm sorry, I didn't look that way. I shouldn't have just looked that way first. I'm just, like, writing feverishly. Okay. Opposed, abstentions? So, moved unanimously. All right, we are on, Councilor Schmidt, line item one zero nine one two, street lighting, please.
I move the figure of seventeen thousand, zero one nine dollars for the street lighting for Groton Longpoint.
Second. Moved by Schmidt and seconded by Parker. Is there a discussion on this item? Councilor Baumgartner and then Heed?
Are all the streetlights LEDs?
They are now.
Okay.
They went through them last year and replaced the streetlights.
So, shouldn't you be expecting a cost savings from that?
I don't think, actually, we get it until, like, the second year of that, or the third year. I forget what they had. It's Groton Utilities gives you the figure. We don't. I'm not sure what the timeframe, John may know that. I don't know what that thing was.
We know what it was, right?
Yeah, but it's a.
We know what it was, too.
It's something about the timeframe of what it comes out to at that point, so I don't have that answer.
So, what would be driving the increase in this year's budget?
Oh, you have to ask Groton Utilities. I don't know. They give us the figure. We don't.
Well, it's their, you know, part of the investment in buying the, because we don't own, they own the fixtures, whereas with Eversource, we own it, but the difference there.
Councilor Heed, did you have other questions, or was that yours?
That was it.
Any other questions on the street lighting? Just have, Councilor Franco, are you?
Have a moment.
Yes.
I have one.
Yes.
I do know Groton Utilities did a new study and basically found people weren't paying what they should be, so that went into effect last fall. Like, that's part of what's affecting us, and that's probably what's affecting them, too.
That people are paying?
That they weren't paying enough, so they adjusted their rates to everybody, right?
Okay. Councilor Zepari? Oh, Finance Director Landry, wanted to add something? I'm sorry.
I was just going to add that the Public Works Director calculates this a number, as he does for the Groton, for the public works and the town line, street lights.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Zepari?
I was going to make a motion to amend the figure to sixteen thousand, two hundred and forty-one, which is the same as last year.
Can you repeat that, please?
Sixteen thousand, two hundred and forty-one.
Sixteen, two forty-one. Moved by Zepari. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Baumgartner. Would you like to discuss your rationale?
They, as Councilor Baumgartner elucidated, the installation of LED lighting has been completed, and there should be, from this point forward, a savings. We really don't know to what extent, but the last year's budget should be more than ample to cover the cost with the reduced-cost lighting.
I believe Mr. Burt just disputed that, but we'll go back to him.
Yeah, they just, they, right when they put them in, they've increased their rates and found that people weren't paying as much as they should, plus they're recouping their investment in the fixtures. So, we're going up, and basically, are you paying us, and then we're paying, we would have to pay anyway, so if you, if you cut them, we'll have to pick up the cost. So, either way, we're paying ourselves. You'll have to adjust the public works budget by the same amount. They're just, we're just billing them for their portion of ours, to Groton Utilities. We get a bill, and tell them, okay, this is your portion of the bill.
Give him a punch. He just went up.
Are, are you good, Councilor Zepari?
I'm not happy with it.
There's not really a choice.
I'm, I'm not happy with that because it's, you're saying this is really our, our budget, not theirs.
But it's Groton Utilities amount that they bill us, and then this is just their portion. So, this comes from Groton Utilities. It's not that it's something we make up, we just split it out, and Groton Utilities increased their rates.
So, we expect the rates to be what next year for their lighting?
What they put in. Gary calculated this is what the, what their actual portion is. There's no built-in fluff, this is just the cost.
And this isn't a cost that the association would pay with their local contributions to the association?
No, they, we're required to pay for the lighting. We're legally required to.
But it should be in our budget.
Well, it's done because they're separate, just like the highway. I think it's just done the same way, because they're, they are separate from us, so it's done separately, just like the highway budget. We're legally required to pay for that, too.
It's okay, Joe.
Okay, Councilor Franco would like, Councilor Franco, and then we'll go back to Finance Director Landry.
So, I went back and I looked at the towns, and the town lighting actually went up five point six percent. So, if their increase is four point seven nine percent, I think that's well below what the town's paying.
And remember, we have, you know, there's some back, so I know, is it, this year we're paying back that extra amount, aren't we? We have lights on two systems. I'm not sure how that all plays into it, either.
Right, but overall, this is less than what the town's going to be seeing for an increase. So, I would rather go with the original.
Are you, are you set? Director Landry?
I just wanted to add, when we put this in last year, and as John, our town manager, Burt, had indicated, it was higher than we had anticipated. We do expect that both this line item and the city of Groton light item to be overdrawn, and I'll be asking for a fourth quarter transfer to put, make those whole. So, if we cut it, we're just going to be setting ourselves back again next year that we're not going to have enough money to pay the light bills, streetlight bills.
Anyone who hasn't spoken, wish to speak on this? Councilor Baumgartner?
I just, and similar to some of the concerns Councilor Zepari brought up, it seems sort of odd to me that, you know, revenues can't be raised from the boroughs to pay for these respective services. Now, I, you know, I, I just, it seems a bit odd to me, so, it kind of, I just want to align my remarks with, with Councilor Zepari. But in, is there anything unclear, Councilor Atwater?
Sure.
You were shaking your head. I wasn't sure if anything was.
No, I asked him if he wanted to speak, and he said no. Okay. Some people have spoken more than once. Anyone who hasn't spoken yet wish to address this? Councilor Heed? Go ahead.
I always ask the question, so this is, take it for what it's worth. I wonder if we've gone through and identified lights that maybe are no longer needed, or, like, are we lighting too much? You know, that kind of thing.
I hate to say it, but we're minimal, actually. They keep asking for more, which probably happens everywhere at that point there. So, we have, basically, a utility says no, and we say no, because there's nothing in[1653.51] So we have, basically, utility says no, and we say no, because there's nothing in the budgets to pay for more lights. So what they have, we have on site is all we can ever going to have, I think. So it's not an increase at all. New house gets built, there's nothing there, so, we don't get a choice on that part there. And utilities figure, there's a grid system, they figure the amount of many lights they have in that part there. We don't get the request to put one in at that point there.
Finance Director Landry, wanted to speak again.
I just want to make it clear, in the budget, if you look at the, on page 185, the street lighting, even though it's, it's in the 1091 budget, the town pays those bills. The Groton Long Point doesn't pay them, they just were moved into dysfunction. So actually, the public works department and the town pays these.
Let's just retract it.
Right. It's just to show that those are the streetlights that are in Groton Long Point that we pay for.
Counselors Zepari.
Just for clarification, as I understand it now, we're going to appropriate money to Groton Long Point Association, and we're going to get, just let me finish, and we're going to get to that, we're going to give them $17,000. We're going to pay the bill for the lighting, and they're going to pay us back the $17,000. Is that, is that what we're doing?
No, the $17,000, we don't actually give it to them, that will remain in the town, we will discharge those bills to this line item. We don't actually give them that money.
I think the clarity is, it comes out of the tax base that we pay into the town. It comes out of the tax base we pay into the town, is where the money actually comes out of. So actually, Groton Long Point is paying their bill, it isn't like they aren't, just like the town does, too, it's a percentage of the tax bill that we pay into it.
All right, so, we are at 10912 street lighting. We have the main motion and the first amendment, we have to vote the first amendment first. The first amendment is $16,241, which is below what the public works director for the town calculated would be the actual cost. So we will vote first on the first amendment. All those in favor of $16,241, say aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Abstained? That motion fails. We are back to the main motion for 10912 street lighting, $17,019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. So moved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Flynn.
Thank you very much, and thank you for moving the time, I appreciate very much.
Sorry?
Thank you for allowing us to come tonight.
Oh, you're welcome. You're welcome, thank you very much.
Have a great evening.
Thank you. So we have, we have finished all the accounts that are scheduled for this evening. Is there anything else you wanted us to take up as far as finance accounts? You're ready to go home, he's like packed up and ready over here. So...
I make a motion that we recess until 9:00 AM on April 6th, Saturday.
Okay, hold on, I want to write it down. So, motion to recess by Atwater.
Second.
Seconded by Heed. All those in favor of recessing until Saturday, April 6th at 9:00 AM, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, so moved unanimously, we are in recess at 8:04.